No will be the site for the Viking Energy Center, which will utilize highly efficient reciprocating engines to produce power for our community. We will begin with two engines that will provide 36 megawatts of power and it will be expandable up to eight engines. The Viking Energy Center will provide our community with resiliency, reliability, fuel flexibility, and low-cost local control of our power supply. And to be clear, plentiful power is critical for this community, our industry, businesses, and our residents. So the Viking Energy Center is an essential part of that for our future. These engines will run off of natural gas, but it's important to know that they can be retrofitted relatively easily for some sort of renewable fuel in the future, including possibly hydrogen. The other great thing about this generation is that it will modulate beautifully with renewable energy, so when the wind quits blowing right away, we can power up these engines and provide power to our community. So it prevents blackouts in our community. We can be self-sufficient and lit up no matter what is happening in the rest of the grid. And it obviously has a positive financial impact to the city and our community in terms of future growth, jobs, taxes, the transfer that CFU provides to the city every year, and then also environmentally, it supports renewable energy on the market. So overall, this project will provide resiliency and reliability for generations to come, and by maintaining local ownership and control, we can keep the cost of power low for our community. So thank you very much for your continued cooperation and help with this project. We deeply appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Avrana.
Thank you.
And I know this has been a long-time project in the works, a lot of planning and effort. So as you said, this isn't a once every type of year investment. This is a pretty significant investment in the future capacity for the city. So appreciate you and the Board of Trustees for all the work looking into this. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak tonight? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion on a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a quitclaim deed conveying title of certain city-owned real estate located at Lot 1, West Viking Road Industrial Park, Phase 7 to Cedar Falls Utilities. Is motion...
So moved.
Second.
And second. Any discussion from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. And that moves us to item number four, public hearing on a proposal to convey a portion of Campus Street right of way south of West 23rd Street. Do we have motion received and filed, proof of publication? So move.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And for this, for staff comments, we have Dr. Ben Claypool. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The conveyance proposed tonight is for the south limits of Campus Street, off of 23rd Street, and up here on this image, you can see it was the roadway of Campus Street that dead-ended. It's about 50% the Commons Building of UNI and then loading cul-de-sac area. When we were approaching UNI as a city working on the 23rd Street documentations for right-of-way and easements on the project, this was one of the things that both parties wanted to get cleaned up. We've been through P&amp;Z approval, we vacated this as a council, and this public hearing is just for the consideration to actually convey it to the university, to the Board of Regents.
Any clarifying questions from council? All right, thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
That will move to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion and a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a quitclaim deed conveying a portion of Campus Street right of way south of West 23rd Street to the Board of Regents, State of Iowa. So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council? And with that, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. That takes us to old business, item number five. Look for motion to pass ordinance number 3128, amending ordinance number 3097 and designating the multi-residential urban revitalization area for the Cedar Falls Multi-Residential Urban Revitalization Plan for the City of Cedar Falls. Amendment number one, upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any conversation from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number six, pass ordinance number 3129, amending Chapter 7, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Amendments, National Electrical Code Adoption, and National Electrical Code Amendments upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
And any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number seven, pass ordinance number 3130, amending the zoning map by removing approximately 0.15 acres of land located at 2309 Main Street from R4 Multi-Residence District to C2 Commercial District upon its third and final consideration. Do we have motion to approve?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number eight, pass ordinance number 3131, amending Chapter 16, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of Ordinances relative to fireworks upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number nine, pass ordinance number 3132, amending Chapter 2, Administration of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Powers and Duties upon its third and final consideration.
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item 10, pass ordinance number 3133, amending Chapter 20 subdivisions and Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to parkland dedication, including establishing a process, methods, and formula for parkland dedication, updating definitions, and establishing rules for land suitability and location upon its second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item 11, pass ordinance number 3134, amending the zoning map by removing approximately 4.85 acres of land located north of West Ridgeway Avenue and east of South Union Road from A1 Agricultural District to M1P Planned Light Industrial District upon its second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number 12, pass ordinance number 3135, amending ordinances number 1923, 2122, 2461, 2696, 2785, 2923, 2953, and 3086, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the amended Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by or for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and Dyke New Hartford Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans. Money is advanced to indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Area 2025 removal parcels upon second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council?
I wasn't listening. Could you repeat it? I knew you were going to say that.
Actually, the next one is pretty much the same thing, so I can just, when we get there, you'll...
A smirk from Kevin does it for me. That's good.
It's a good day when the lawyer is smirking. Anything from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. I can try to abbreviate this one. Item 13, pass ordinance number 3136, amending ordinance number 2926, providing that general property taxes be levied and collected each year on all property located within the amended South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and Hudson Community School District, and other taxing entities, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans. Money is advanced to indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area. Amendment number one to the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan upon second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, please. Anyone here remember the days when you had to read in class? And you're like, when's this skill going to be valuable to me?
Found it.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Moves us to the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote and a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that it be considered separately. Are there any requests from council? All right, seeing none from council, any from the public? All right, seeing none from the public, I'll look for a motion to approve items 14 through 17 of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. That moves us to the resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion unless asked to be considered separately. Are there any requests from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Number 32, please.
32? Okay.
Um, 39, please, Mr. Mayor. I assume just pulling 39 is probably good for the 39 and 40, right?
Um, let's see, 40, we'll probably pull it just because it's contingent on the previous. I think that's the only one contingent, yeah. All right, any others? All right, any from the public? All right, seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve items 18 through 45 of the resolution calendar excluding items 39, or excuse me, 32, 39, and 40.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Takes us to item 32, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a public service agreement with Northeast Iowa Food Bank relative to emergency funding in an amount up to $25,000. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and council?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just appreciate your efforts and the staff to find a way to come up with $25,000 here, hopefully pending the approval of this item. Don't have to tell anybody that times are tough for everybody in this community, in this nation right now. Having recently had some volunteer exposure at the food bank, I can tell you that the need is very much there, and I know we've got the director of the food bank here tonight as well, so hopefully we can get some comments from her, but just want to give kudos to staff. I think this is very, very much a needed situation.
Thank you, counselor. And some context for, I know us up here, because this was something that came up in a recent conversation with the food bank, City of Waralu and the county. This was, and for the public, conversation. A request from us, Waralu, and the county to look at providing up to $100,000 in joint funding to address some of the short-term immediate needs with the SNAP program funding on hold, but also just an increasing need we've been seeing over the last several months especially, but over the last several years, and as well as some federal funding that did not come through for the food bank. They've had a gap in some of the operational funding. I know the state did step up and had some matching funds, and so we'll be, this would be in partnership with the county and with the City of Waralu to kind of issue a challenge to the community to help match some of that support to the food bank. And again, we do have the director of the food bank here if anybody would like to ask any questions. Is there any other discussion from council? Or would you mind if I brought up to... Please, it's right there if you would.
Good evening. Barb Prather, Northeast Iowa Food Bank. Thank you very much for this. You haven't voted yet, so thank you very much for bringing this up. For the last, you know, ever since probably 2022, when COVID relief money started going away that supported families in general, our need has gone up and food insecurity has not gone away. Four of the programs that we have focus on kids. The last six weeks have been really tough on people in our communities. Pantry services, not only through the Cedar Valley Food Pantry, but throughout our 16 counties and here in Blackhawk County, are up 50% the first two weeks in November from what it was in the first two weeks of October. The community has always supported us, and we ask that they continue to support us, but having this show of support from our government bodies really does help us make a difference in the lives of people who, through no fault of their own, need a little extra help.
And I know to one of your points in the discussion, and something I think is good for the community to know is the food banks cannot replace SNAP benefits. I think this is something to try and help with additional need right now, but the amount of, I believe it's for every meal the food bank provides, it's about nine meals.
Yep. For every meal, the one meal food banks provide, SNAP provides nine meals. We will never make up the difference as much as we try, and you know, we're here to meet the gap that's already there because government doesn't support full benefits for everybody, but that's where communities come in and fill the gap, and that's what we're here for.
Thank you, Director.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Is there any questions from council? Well, we have Barb here. Again, thank you for all the work.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I have one question for you. So how can the public, is it better to donate food, time, money, all the above?
All the above. I will say next week is our annual holiday distribution where we're planning for about 5,000 families who are, have received food from the food bank to come in, so there's opportunities to volunteer there. But just ongoing volunteerism during the, you know, during the day, evenings, whoever it is, whether it's a, you know, a service club, a business, whatever that is, we can always use volunteers to help. You know, money we leverage to bring in food through our donated sources and through the Feeding America Network, and then local food drives just help fill those gaps for immediate needs.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And I believe Waralu did pass, they had their meeting just for us, they passed their funding, and then the county will be meeting tomorrow to consider their portion of it as well, so. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. That moves us to item number 39, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an amended and substituted developmental procedures agreement and RP master plan amendment for Wild Horse Ridge subdivision. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and counselor?
Um, I just wanted to pull this item. I know, I believe we all received maybe an email or two on this, and I don't know, I had a chance to watch the last couple, planning and zoning meetings and catch up on that, and there was some good conversation from community members and neighbors in that area. I thought there was good conversation from the planning and zoning commissioner, commissioners. What I take away, the main concern, first, I want to like applaud the good things. So I think what I learned is the connectivity in that new development, or that, in this completion, I guess.
Subdivision?
Yeah. The subdivision is much better because of our new, what is that officially called? The connectivity? Connectivity standards in our subdivision. Yes. Where we've got maybe an additional road to the west that's going to connect the neighborhoods, there's not just neighborhoods that are like isolated by themselves, maybe better sidewalk connectivity in blocks that are long that would help people to get to the proposed green space, and I think that's the other main part that I took from those conversations was the size of the park, because in the past, and correct me if I'm saying something incorrectly, but in the past, we didn't have maybe a very nailed-down requirement for park space, but now we do. And so this space that's going to be allotted in this proposed master plan is up to, well, it doesn't take into account the other areas that have already been developed, it does take into account this specific subdivision. And so what I heard from folks is there's concern that, you know, it's not as large as maybe it could be, if that had been in place years ago when that area was being developed. And I just want to kind of make acknowledgement of that. I don't know, maybe there's folks here that want to speak to that. It is kind of a, I get what folks are saying, because I think who wouldn't want a bigger park? But also, I don't know that we really have a leg to stand on to, you know, this is the formula, this is what we can do now. So I just didn't want to pass it like without making an explanation. I want people to know that I am aware of the concern. I, in a perfect world, it would be bigger than the, I think it's like two and a half acres or something that's proposed, but I don't know that we can get to a bigger space at this time. So I just kind of wanted to acknowledge that I've heard people's concerns and not just, you know, sweep it through with a consent calendar.
Thank you, counselor.
Or sorry, resolution calendar.
It's close.
But one of the calendars.
Thank you again. Is there any other discussion? Yep?
There is a bit of a negative with the new development requirements. When we went from a right-of-way of 60 feet to 66, we lost, the developer lost four lots that could have been developed for them. So that cost of those four lots had to be spread out amongst all the other lots, driving up the price for those. If we went back to our 60 feet, there could have been four more and still had the other development requirements there, but, so it's not all necessarily positive. So we could have a bigger park.
Thank you, counselor. I will say quick, just, this is the first time, this, I think this is our first development that's gone through with our new park zoning in place. So I know that it's been a process. Anytime you put something new in, especially this project was kind of in the process as we got those requirements in place, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, the developer, the residents, for voicing your concerns openly, but also, you know, working through when we came to the final plans, and I think it helps us make sure going forward, we're including some of these park spaces and getting it in there. So I know anytime you put something new in place, it causes some friction. So just thank you to everyone in that process for working through it newly for the first time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to kind of echo and make sure it's, that's why what we've, the requirement that we have in place now, going forward, now this hopefully won't happen where there's a large piece of development that doesn't have any park space, because we've made it crystal clear.
Yep. Thank you, counselors. Any additional conversation from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Just name and address, please.
Jeremy Swanson, 904 Cherrywood Drive. So I am one of the individuals who reached out to all of you, and just in case you didn't have an opportunity to fully, you know, read the email or had any questions about what I had to say, I've got a little something. So, um, if your kids are like mine, they love being outside, and study after study shows that the importance of outdoor activity, especially over screen time and social media. One study suggests that children have better physical, mental, and emotional health, and even improve learning when they play outside. And as an educator, I can see the dangers of kids spending too much time on their screens, and I see the students blossom when they spend time outside, especially during outdoor recreation activities. That being said, thank you for working on passing the new ordinance that requires green space and developments. Unfortunately, due to the lack of such an ordinance, so many of the neighborhoods in this part of town are missing these green spaces. They include the new development going across from Wild Horse, West Fork Crossing, Cherrywood Acres, The Ledges, Quail Ridge, Lexington, Paddington Drive, Windwood, The Ridges, and Royal Oaks. None of these have green spaces, and green space is a commodity that once it's gone, we're not getting it back. Therefore, I believe the city council should require the developers to create a green space that would adequately satisfy the needs of the entire neighborhood. A coworker who lives in Wild Horse has told me that they requested green space several times over the years and were denied. A concern comes for the families who live there currently, but also for the 100-plus additional homes that will be coming over the next 10 years. Currently, some of the other neighborhood parks are much larger than the proposed Wild Horse Park. Orchard Hill Park is eight acres. Pfeiffer is 10. Holmes is five. Lookout Park is four, and Place to Play Park is five. As a council, I see it as your responsibility to the citizens of this wonderful community, not to the profit of the out-of-town developers. 20 or more years from now, no one is going to look back and say, gosh, I wish we had smaller green spaces. This green space has the potential to be something truly wonderful for the entire community, just like Place to Play Park, or Big Woods, or the new Whitewater Park. As the city continues to move in this direction, it only makes sense to add large, if not huge, green spaces as well. Additionally, and I'm not sure if this is part of this or the next one, but I would love to see a revised version for Phase 10 of the development. This part of the development currently lies on the undeveloped and still-natural part of the pond. On a recent walk there, I observed many native plants and then enslaved some invasive ones too. I also saw evidence of wildlife, including animal trails, tracks, and slides into the pond. This area is clearly already home to non-human species, and we should keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Just name and affiliation, please.
Larry Kuzman, Clapsetter Garber, 5106 Nordic Drive. On behalf of the developer Midwest Development, one of the big things I want to bring up is, like she said, like with this new portion of the developments, a new preliminary plat and everything else like that, with the park space that we're providing, the, currently the parkland ordinance is not codified, so we wouldn't by rights need to do it, but the developer decided to do it because they understand the concerns of the public and stuff like that. So, but you wouldn't expect a different developer, if they were developing this, to put in twice the amount that they're supposed to for all the other homeowners that have already purchased their lots. And they don't have to pay for the park space, but the new property owners do. So what is your, what would be that remedy? Would it be the city purchases part of it and does an assessment? You know, so there's a lot of different ways you'd go with it, but I think the fact that they came up with as much as they did was pretty good, I think, so. That's all I got. If you guys have any questions, I can answer any of those, so.
Thank you for making the time to be here.
Yeah, no problem.
Is it, while we have any clarifying questions for the fellow wall? Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, with that, we'll close the public comments. One thing I did want to speak to, in fairness to both points, I do think that's why we're putting these policies in place, to make sure going forward we do these things, because it is hard, once a development's built, they have to spread the cost over the new homes to be built, and it'd be hard for us to go back and try to assess that cost to the old homeowners. So I do know this is an area of town we definitely see as underserved in the park space, and I know that's been a big conversation of what other methods we can try within that whole kind of western district, try to find ways to bring some additional park space, knowing it is very much needed. So I don't think we can solve it all through this one development, but it's definitely noted that it's a very underserved area across that whole western side of town, so thank you for championing that, and thank you guys for working on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I just make one more comment?
Yeah.
I do appreciate that the developer, you know, is bringing this two and a half acres to us. I will say though, I hope at some point we can recognize that green space is an amenity for the neighborhood, so when you're building and developing and selling houses, I would think that that would make... selling houses, I would think that that would make your sales to people and families an easier sell, so it's, it's not just a, it's really for the good of all of us, um, so, I'm very appreciative, I'm, I'm appreciative that we have a much clearer policy, um, you know, I, I think everybody has the concern that we be the best we can be for all of us, and, and, I, I, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
We did now.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries, that moves us to item 40, resolution approving the preliminary plat of Wild Horse Ridge 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th additions, contingent upon the previous item, we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any conversation from council?
Mr. Mayor, question, uh, if known, what would be the time sequence by the time you get to the 10th addition? Ballpark, I guess.
If everything goes as planned, they're looking at 2033, 2034.
Okay.
For it to be all built out, so.
So, given the comment from a previous speaker about all the wildlife and whatnot that's going over there, if there'd be an opportunity for individuals, nonprofits, somebody to maybe buy some of those lots, or do something?
I would assume so, if they could work with the developer for something like that.
You know, maybe the developer would say, God, we make so much money, we could donate a few lots to the city.
I love your optimism.
That's a good hope.
I'm just throwing that out there.
No, it's, I mean, you're in for a profit. I, I'm sure the developer would be willing to talk to people about stuff like that, so.
Sounds like it's right by a body of water and nature and...
Doesn't take much for any, any of those people to reach out to him, so.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Appreciate open conversation.
Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Just name the address, please.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive, beings that this is the first one, the first park, uh, thing to come through, does this meet the requirements of the, of the policy that's been passed or not, that's the only question I have.
Yep, and this one does, Director, I don't know if you want to speak to it quickly, but...
I believe technically it's just slightly shy, but only very slightly, I don't have an exact number for you, but it's 2.25 acres.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, bring back council, no further conversation, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries, that takes us to ordinances, item number 46, pass an ordinance amending Chapter 23 Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Fines for Parking Violations, Empoundment, and Demobilization of Vehicles and Parking Enforcement Districts Described Upon Its First Consideration, do we have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any conversation from council?
Mr. Mayor?
What you got?
Uh, just wondering on the fee for removing the boot, we did talk about that, the last time we went through this, that we might increase that, Mr. Birdie, was that 75 already?
Marcy, would you mind?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Marcy.
It's currently 50.
50, and was there any consideration to go higher with that, because that was one of the things that we thought we could do?
Um, I believe we talked about a possible tiering program, that if, like, the first time you were booted, it would be one price, and if you were a retreat, then it would increase each time.
Would that be under the scope of this, to do something like that, or do it when we do the rest of the fees in May or June, something like that?
I would think probably with the fees at that time, because that's when the, the booting fee would be put on the fee schedule.
That's the fee schedule.
Okay.
So we can take a look at that, then?
Okay, make a note. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, thank you, Marcy. Any other discussion, questions from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries, takes us 47 bills and claims, we have motion allow bills and claims for November 17th.
So moved, second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, any council updates or announcements this evening? If not, didn't have any submitted referrals, any press ring referrals, if not otherwise, that will take us item 48, executive session, look for a motion for an executive session to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation, or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation pursuant to Iowa Code 2151C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and requires a roll call vote, please.
Sorry, it's frozen. Okay, sorry.
Oh, it's still on bills and claims?
Okay, now you can go.
Okay. We voted twice for bills and claims.
Pay them bills.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries, so we will now go to executive session, we will come back here to adjourn the meeting after that, but no further business will be discussed after that point, so you're welcome to stay if you would like, otherwise, thank you everyone for coming, have a good night, and we will see you next time.